Time is 6:01. We are here at the meeting for the UISD Board of Trustees. Today is November the 19th, 2014. We're here at the Bill Johnson Soon Activity Complex, Laredo, Texas. The items to be discussed below are considered or upon which any formal action may be taken are listed below. The items do not have to be taken in any order shown on this meeting notice. Unless removed from the consent agenda, items identified within the consent agenda will be acted on at one time. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge in a moment aside.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag like United States of America, an individual or public who sustains one nation under God, indivisible,天地一 just.
Honor the Texas flag, Pledge of Allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. I hereby call this meeting to order. Let the record show that we have four board members present. We have the Honorable Ramiro Veliz Jr. present. Father III present, Juan Roberto Ramirez.
Present.
And Ricardo Molina present as well. That is, we have a quorum. Meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. Do we have any announcements by the board? Ramiro Veliz?
Not at this time, Mr. President.
Ramiro Veliz?
Not yet, Ramiro.
Mr. Molina. The only thing I would add is that we hope that everybody here has a safe and happy Thanksgiving holidays with your family. We want to make sure that all our kids come back after the holidays, so please be safe and enjoy your time off. We will start with item number four, recognitions.
This is Mr. President and members of the board, members of the community. Good evening. For the record, I'm Gloria Vendon, Assistant Superintendent for Administration, and I will be representing Mr. Santos this evening. He could not be in attendance. Please join me at the front of the stage so that we can recognize several of our students for their achievements this evening. In addition to that, we would like to recognize some of our staff members also and some of our community members who have helped donate and assisted our students this past month with several activities throughout our district. Thank you.
It is with great honor and pleasure that I come before you this evening to recognize an individual that has dedicated her life and career to educating and advocating for students with disabilities. I'm here to recognize Lucy Gutierrez. Please stand, Ms. Gutierrez. She is receiving the award for the 2014 Outstanding Service for Outreach for the Special Olympics of Texas Organization. Lucy has been involved with Special Olympics since 1979 and was named Volunteer of the Year for Area 21 twice. Once in 2003 and again in 2012. This award comes to Lucy for her efforts in promoting Special Olympics in our community by volunteering, by her involvement in Project Unify as a meet-in-the-middle facilitator, for coaching students for the bowling and track and field events, for coaching students to become global messengers for the project, for fundraising, for acting as awards director for Area 21 Special Olympics events, for acting as medical coordinator for the same. At this time, please join me in congratulating Mrs. Lucy Gutierrez.
Understanding the importance of giving back to the community, CR England, which is one of North America's largest transportation companies and world's largest temperature-controlled carrier, has been donating hundreds of backpacks with a $15 voucher to purchase school supplies to help students in need since the summer of 2011. This past August, CR England once again donated backpacks and vouchers for school supplies at an event held at Texas A&amp;M International University. Dave Akers, President of CR England Mexico Division, whose headquarters are off of Mines Road, says each year he's excited to see students receive these supplies and hopes the donation will enhance, excuse me, will enhance the student's school year experience in a special way. Tonight, United ISD wants to thank CR England for being a true community leader when it comes to helping our students, and this evening we have Mr. Akers here to receive the award on behalf of CR England. Mr. Akers.
Good evening, board members, Ms. Vendon and parents. On Friday, October the 31st, 2014, our four high schools and curriculum and instruction brought forth an exceptional event for the first time to our district. Because of your hard work and commitment to excellence, the first UISD Renaissance Festival was a huge success. UISD would like to thank Goodwill Industries and their representative, Raquel Lopez, please stand. Ms. Lopez, please join. For their donations to our students and teachers. And Mr. and Mrs. Carlos Quevara, please stand. Please stand. Please join Ms. Vendon and the board members. For building an outdoor stage which was utilized for announcements. Your generosity made a huge difference for our students and we are most thankful. Also, one more person that needs to be up there is Ms. Hughes. She is the high school coordinator for social studies. Ms. Hughes, please come up front. Let's give her a big round of applause. We've got one more, Ms. Hughes. Just one more. Endless nights, not sleeping, not eating, getting everything ready for our students. Let's give them a big round of applause.
Good evening, honorable board members. I'm here to present again United Middle School Orchestra for the continuing times of coming back with awards. And I'd like to go ahead and introduce them, Ray Bena and the Principal Rebecca Monales. Please come forward. United Middle School Orchestra had 25 members qualified for the Middle School Region Orchestra. Through a rigorous audition and competing against students from Laredo, Corpus Christi, and surrounding areas, these students took top chairs in the region orchestra. Sofia Neres, Jennifer Gavilla, Kevin Medid, Marcos Azivá, Inaki Suarez, Eric Godíniz, Lyndon Lipovitz, Victoria Canales, Mary Catris, Amanda Baviak, Annelise Montemayor, Sofia Regalado, Natalia Benarón, Madison Crawford, Christopher Lozano, Arina Yeran, Carolina Cruz, Yarit, Lucio, Jim Gassun, Hector Molina, Amiro de la Santos, Camilo Flores, Fatima Muñoz, and Daniela Wong, and Jaco Ramírez. Help me congratulate Mr. Ray Bena for his continued success and gratefulness for the union.
Next, we want to recognize our high school marching bands that advanced to the area level competition by receiving a One Division rating in UIO marching contest. UISD bands from United, United South, and John V. Alexander advanced to the Area G marching contest held in San Antonio, October the 25th. Coming up to the stage, we welcome United High School Longhorn Band. The band is under the direction of John Mallon and Assistant Band Director Socé Castro, Michael Garcia, and Michael Valdez. United High School Band also advanced to the Area G finals competition. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Ramírez, for joining the band and your assistant principals. Thank you. Congratulations and thank you. Good job, guys. Good job. Congratulations, Mr. Ramírez. Next, we have the band members from United South High School. Vanu Eka, Francisco Sosa. Band Director is Francisco Sosa. Assistant band directors are Joshua Martinez, Robert Ortiz, and Rodolfo Montalvo. United South High School also advanced to the Area G final competition. Congratulations. Let's give a big round of applause. Our principal, Ana Romírez. And last but certainly not least, we welcome the band members from John V. Alexander High School. Band directors are José Galenzuela, Head Band Director, Assistant Band Directors Lyle Perkins, Patrick Lewis, and Jacob Thompson. Congratulations. Principal, Mr. Ernesto Sambeval. Congratulations.